...in total, Look Home with Meeting Act. Adequate notice of this board meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 7, 2019. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education office, mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Star legend on January 17, 2019, posted on our district website. This is an official meeting. Stand for the flag, please.
The flag is raised. To the five hundred and ninety states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask a moment of silence, please, for a person that had been dear to Nutley and to education, Ms. Ruth Pepper. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. There might be something that board members want to say, we'll have a chance to say that. Roll call, Mr. DeMello, please.
Mrs. Danjekorn, here. Mr. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Mrs. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Schlerer.
Here.
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Cardassella.
I need approval of the minutes. Motion.
Sir.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, all in favor?
I'm not.
Correspondents?
We do not have any.
Presentations. Dr. Gray, you want to bring some?
It was the Capella. So tonight, or?
Are you ready for to get working now?
No, you can't wait. So, tonight, Mr. Capella, our SAT kid at middle school, but also our HIB specialist for the?
District.
For the district, sorry.
I have a question.
My introduction.
I have a question.
Special authority for the district is going to give the kids school self-assessment report. As you know, Mr. Capella comes with us several times a year to make sure that we understand what's been going on with harassment, intimidation, and bullying throughout the district and the district's brain that is not helping.
Yep.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're everyone's enjoying their summer. So, as per the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, each year, the anti-bullying specialist, along with the school safety slash school climate team, needs to conduct a self-assessment of their school. So this evening, I will be going over what those scores are and what is the criteria for the self-assessment. The self-assessment has not really changed since the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights law has been enacted, since the 2011, 2012 school year. The self-assessment is, consists of eight core elements, and within each element, there are a number of indicators. It's quite substantial. It's a quarter of a page mover. It has the ratings, which as you can see below your hue, they rate, each school rates themselves from zero to three, where zero does not meet the criteria, or three, to the highest, you can see all the requirements. The state does provide criteria to determine their ratings, which they also say too, that if there ever is, the state ever wants to come in, we need to provide documentation which substantiates those indicators. Core element number one, focused on the programs, approaches, and initiatives. Are we establishing, implementing, assessing our programs? Are our programs, approaches, initiatives prevented and addressed HIB throughout the school year? Is the school safety team, school climate team identifying patterns of HIB and reviewing the school climate for prevention of HIB? That is one of the main goals, or the functions of the school climate team, is to identify patterns. If there are patterns, what is the school district, what is the, I'm sorry, what is the school doing to address those patterns? Core element number two, the trainings. As for the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, all new staff members have to be trained, so as they need to be continuous training throughout the course of the school year. The anti-bullying specialists are, do speak at each monthly faculty meeting. I do train all the new staff members. I was here last Wednesday training new staff, and throughout the school, of course, of the school year, the anti-bullying specialists, who also serve as school counselors, are addressing the students on the HIB policy, informing them what is the policy. Core element number three, other staff trainings. Beginning of last school year, I believe it was September 9, we did have the mandatory two-hour training, which was conducted by the Society for the Prevention of Teen Suicide. So, all our staff members were trained at the beginning of last year. We are continually providing instruction to students regarding HIB prevention. Anti-bullying specialists do meet with me throughout the course of the school year, and if they like, they can also go for trainings as well. The school climate team, are we providing them with professional development opportunities? That's something that we do want to work on this year. I believe it is the New Jersey State Bar Foundation just recently sent out a email offering a free program, free training for staff. Also during, throughout the course, early on in the school year, in September, October, I do need with all the administrators, add an administrative meeting regarding the HIB policy, giving them a refresher, if there are any questions or concerns. Core element number four, are we providing age-appropriate instruction on preventing HIB? Are we observing the Week of Respect, which is the first week of October, which we have been doing every year? Number five, of course, the principals are appointing anti-bullying specialists at each school, which they meet with me on a minimum of twice a year, and the school safety team meets a minimum of twice per year. And core element number six, is the district following procedures for reporting. Are they verbally reporting to the administrator or the designate on the same day, as well as within two, three days of reporting it, providing a written documentation, a written report? Number seven, are we notifying parents? Are administrators notifying parents? Is the investigation completed within ten school days? As well as the anti-bullying specialist and the administrator completing a report, which then is sent to Dr. Glazer, within two school days, and as you know, it does go for one reading, the first reading at a board meeting, and then at the following board meeting, it goes for a second meeting. Core element number eight, excuse me, are we ensuring that our staff members are reporting it verbally and written? And as Dr. Glazer indicated before, we just recently received, I'm sorry, not recently, but, it was beginning of June, or mid, middle of June, where we received last school years, the seventeen, eighteen grades, and they were posted, I believe within two, two school days of receiving that, those grades. So, here are our grades for this school year. Each school, you know, tends to fluctuate just a little bit. So here are the, our, our grades. You know, core element number three, that is constantly under review. What are we doing to educate our students? What programs, what initiatives are we providing our students? Core element number three, one of the goals, as I said earlier, is for this year, is to provide opportunities for the school safety team, school climate team, to go to professional Regarding our policy and procedure, like I said, core element number one, that's the main goal. What are we doing to improve? We're constantly, there, as I said earlier, there's always different patterns, and we have to be, we have to identify them, try to be in front of them, identify them, and to address them. And as I said earlier, this is for, is to provide professional development opportunities for the school safety team. Glad to see that, I believe it was at our last, was it at our last board meeting, our, thank you for revising and approving our HIB policy. After this evening's presentation, it gets board approved, becomes board approved, Dr. Glazer certifies that with the state, which does include a statement of insurances, which we include this evening's board event meeting, the date. Prior, I guess this past year was the first time where the state, I guess it took a little longer to provide our grades for the previous year. Once those grades are provided, we'll get them up within ten school days. Usually it was in the past, there was sometime they would provide us those grades in December, however, we receive them this June. And these, this is was, this was two years ago, seventeen eighteen, it was released in the nineteen, and the next school day, it was released and posted on our district website. Okay? And I'm working with Ian, because we do have a new school website. The HIB link could be found in each school's homepage. Thank you.
So that'll give them the coordinator at each school, so somebody's looking forward in middle school, we'll get up the coordinator, and we'll have their site and everything information right there.
Yep. So if they go to John A. Chouak for Middle School, you go into Middle School, it'll be the HIB link. Previously, it was on the left-hand column on the homepage, but Ian and I, hopefully tomorrow, or Wednesday, Ian and I will be to address that.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Capella, thank you so much. I know you're leaving, but to see you again later, for coming back during the vacation and doing your training for new teachers, so thank you. Good morning.
I need a motion for us, you know, to close session, executive session, to discuss the personnel issues before we come back into the meeting.
Motion closed.
Second. Okay. We'll probably be in a closed session, I would think fifteen, twenty minutes, hopefully no longer than that. We have a personnel issue we need to deal with right away. I need a roll call again.
Mrs. Danjekorn.
Here.
Mr. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Mrs. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Schlerer.
Here.
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Okay. Thank you for your indulgence, super finish report.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. Good evening. Thank you for joining us as we prepare for a new school year. Many of you have been on a slower schedule, but we are in high gear throughout the district. Lots of hubbub everywhere you go, and a lot of excitement as the staff is returning. Our directors of curriculum, Mr. Bania, Mrs. Locanzolo, organized a wonderful three days, thank you again, of programming for thirty new teachers. I, for President Cardassella, Mayor Scarpelli, welcomed our teachers to the Nutley Public Schools. They also had the opportunity to meet with the administrative leadership team, our business office, the educational association, they got their Chromebooks, some training from Mr. Beister, Ian, I don't see you anywhere, but thank you, Dr. Shosa, and also, they got some training on school ag. The work that we're doing with the Danielson Framework, that's our observation and evaluation model, details of our expectations for curriculum instruction and assessment, and the different opportunities for professional practice were incredibly well-received. Feedback from the three days was overwhelmingly positive. So, in addition to Kat and Janine, I just want to thank IMAC, our health insurance provider, the administrators association, and our teachers association for providing lunch every day, and again, Ms. Rovania, Mrs. Locanzolo, for doing breakfast and coffee. Soon you can just hope a catering comes. Additionally, we had second-year teacher training, we had mentor training, as well as our required HIB training, and our safety and security training for new staff and substitutes. You heard me thank Mr. Capella already for coming in on his vacation to participate, and I have to thank Mr. Ferraro and Mrs. Boyle for their ongoing efforts to make sure every staff member's trained, everybody gets their IDs prior to starting in the district. And I guess another thank you to Mr. Bania, because he did also the CPR training, you think that nothing's going on, also the CPR training and certification for the staff and coaches. I think it did make a really big difference to do it in the district, and I hope you'll have time to do it again, next time we need it. Thank you. Today started the first two days of our administrative leadership retreat, in addition to our state-mandated gang training. And yes, we have to have the training in the state of New Jersey, whether we have the issue here in town or not, and I was very specific with the detective to ask that question, not at one of our challenges. Our administrators are also completing legal training, learning about the district risk assessment procedures, and also having the opportunity to use school ag. Thursday, we have our custodial kickoff, I'm not going to say anything about that, because Mr. Pariji's going to give his first report tonight, and even though I'm going to address the team on Thursday, I do want to acknowledge, I'll say it now, the tremendous, tremendous work of the buildings and grounds team. Summer is already overwhelming with projects, and you're going to hear from Mr. Pariji that we layered on one or two other things on top of that, huge projects. So, you've certainly hit the ground running, you also get a big thank you, and I'm going to look forward to seeing everybody on Thursday to really tell them how much we appreciate that they have once again risen to the occasion and gotten our buildings ready, and looking great in time for the opening. While I am speaking of staff, it's with a heavy heart, truly, that we accept the resignation of our assistant business administrator, Mr. John Lomora, as he prepares to take on the business administrator role. I am emotional. And Orde, and Mrs. Karen Evans, our business administrator, who's announced her retirement for December. Individually, I'm going to say in my time here working with them, and Karen's been here ten years, John preceded me, they've accomplished so much. They're both accomplished administrators, they've made an exceptional impact on the efficient and effective operations of the district. Collectively, their life changes leave a whole here for us in the district, and in our hearts. I promise we'll properly acknowledge you both as the time gets closer, but for now, I just want to say congratulations, only the best in all of your future endeavors. On Thursday, this past Thursday, August 22, I, again, Mr. Cardassella, Mr. Riley, Mr. Ferraro, Mr. Francia, our Yanacaw principal, Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Petracco, our police officers, Guyden O'Halloran and Neary, our fire chief, Mr. Cofone, Fireman Santoro, Assemblyman and his wife, Caputo, neighbors from the Yanacaw place, including Mrs. Gallagher, as well as previous board members that have participated, Mr. Kuzinski, Mr. DeMayo, had the last meeting of what's been a series of meetings at Yanacaw School. We have been looking at changes to the pickup, the dismissal procedures on Yanacaw Place. We really needed to address safety and security for our students during that dismissal time. Drop-off in the morning, crowded, not terrible. That pickup in the afternoon gives us some real significant traffic concerns. I think that I'm proud, pleased, happy, to report that I do think we came up with a really viable solution. Today, we communicated our plans to the Yanacaw community to detail those changes, and the new procedures are going to be implemented for the first day of school. What's going to happen, for those of you that are not Yanacaw people, and I did not draw another crayon, so you should be happy to know, I did not try and do that again. Think of Passaic Avenue to Brookfield Place, of having a single lane, except for where the driveway is in front of the one house, and Yanacaw Place, right next to the school, adjacent to the school, also having a single lane from Yanacaw Place down to the end, the handicap parking spaces have been relocated. And dismissal being staggered. So our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade students will continue to come out the door, they always have, five minutes earlier. That lane, nobody gets out of their car, nobody parks. You will pull up, the teachers will bring your kids out, when your kid gets in the car, you keep going. The lanes are intended for continuous traffic flow. On Brookfield Place, at the regular dismissal, our four, five, and sixth grade students will come out, same thing will happen on Brookfield, except you have to continue on, you will not be able to turn onto Yanacaw Place. So staggering the dismissal, staggering, literally taking half of the cars off of Yanacaw Place, should make a big difference as far as traffic flow goes at the end of the day. We're asking parents not to come to line up before three o'clock, and I know this is a big change of culture. I know people come at 2:30, bring their coffee, see their friends, catch up, talk about everything that's going on. We just can't do that. Unfortunately, with people double parking, parking, you know, all over the place, and kids running out to cars, we really need to be proactive. I have to say, the willingness of Mayor Scarpelli, his DPW and engineering team, who did all of the painting, all of the measuring, all of the drawings, we actually also had a plan to detail the parking spaces and driveways that the neighbors chose not to pursue. Commissioner Evans, who facilitated the first meeting with Assemblyman Caputo, Commissioner Petracco and his police and fire teams, all of the members of the Board of Education, Principal Francia, the neighbors, everybody. Because of that willingness to explore what would be possible, and we literally, I'm telling you, that first meeting, there must have been out there an hour and a half going, what if, well, maybe, no, but if we try, it was wonderful. People asked really significant questions, everybody responded quickly, and fortunately, all those ideas turned into action. It was a truly meaningful collaboration. For all of you who may read or hear that we don't work together in this town, you would be sorely mistaken. Every aspect came together, and this was a small project, so you can imagine, again, when you hear about some of the bigger projects that we have going on, how important this work does. It does not get said enough. Going to say it now, take the opportunity to say it now. I am always appreciative of our opportunities to work together with all of the people in town, commissioners, engineers, whoever it may be. We really do try and create the best outcomes for students and families. We really are all working together to enhance the Nutley community as a whole. I'm beginning my fourth year in the district, and I have to say I remain grateful to be part of Nutley. I think the only way that I retain my passion and commitment, and no snickering over there for the people who know how tired I am, is because of what we've achieved, and honestly, what we still have to accomplish. I know that I'm looking forward to a new year of that continued progress, and I do think you're going to continue to see that level of collaboration between all of us. It's important that I say that as I go to the next part of the report, which is the variances. And from the fact that my phone is already blowing up, and we've had calls all day, as we come into the end of the school year, I think everybody knows that the registration, sign-in and sign-out, and the variances are probably a hotter topic than what class and which backpack you got issued. For your information, we had more than twenty-five new students register in the past week. We have appointments still through September 9, just as a point of our conversation. I'm going to tell you that Radcliffe kindergarten is closed, Radcliffe first grade has only three spots remaining, Radcliffe fourth grade is closed, Lincoln second grade is closed, Lincoln fourth grade has one spot. Spring Garden third grade is closed, Washington kindergarten is closed, Yanacaw third grade's closed, and their first grade has just one seat. And that's with the addition of a trailer at Washington and an addition of a trailer at Spring. Mrs. Boyle and Mr. Ferraro, again, have done an amazing job, and when I tell you Yeoman's work managing this process, taking on the variance requests in Mrs. Mayor's absence, we're still getting requests for early registration, meaning people who haven't even closed on their house or rented an apartment yet. They want their kids to start school. I think you know that if they do not start by September 1st, we do not grant those requests. In many cases, the closing or the lease mysteriously never happens, and then you hear from us in June as we're disenrolling students. The only consideration we do make, and people ask me this all the time, is in the case of custody or joint custody, and we do require the legal or court documentation to be forced of you to register. I also want to say that some of the variance requests are not based on a sibling, are not based on, you know, pickup or placement in special ed. Some of the requests are for specific schools. People have said, and while I think it's a beautiful thing that you're four generations at a school, and eighty years of family being at the same school, I'm really proud, really proud, of our team, of our staff, of the community, that over the past five years, curriculum instruction and assessment has not only been elevated, but it's systemic. I can tell you that the same curriculum and the same resources are happening in all five elementary schools, and we continue to provide staff professional learning to ensure the consistency and delivery of instruction, and the fidelity of programs. I think one of the goals that I had when I came was that we truly become a Nutley school district, rather than a district of schools. You know, people would say, oh, I'm the Yanacaw district, or the Spring Garden district. We are the Nutley Public Schools. I think the implementation has strengthened the rigor of curriculum and instruction and assessment. I can confidently say that a child attending any one of Nutley's schools receives the same high-quality education, and I have absolutely no problem saying that we cannot grant a variance request just on the specific reason that your family's attended the school for eighty years. You've heard me say it a million times, this makes a million and one. The issue is not education. The issue remains instructional space and the budget to support education, primarily with staffing. That includes our significantly understaffed special education and school counseling departments. We did file with the state of New Jersey for emergency relief. It's a one-time grant if we receive it. I have no idea when it's even considered, but we did pursue that opportunity. I think you know that our past two demographic studies evidence that redistricting does not solve our problem, just moves the problem around the district like musical chairs. We do need an increase in instructional space. We detailed in the last referendum, the known potential development, the family units being built for our affordable housing, perhaps some residential units, and on three, maybe other potential development over by Lincoln School. If we don't have a plan for adding permanent instructional space, the report you're going to hear from Mr. Pariji is going to continue as we have to add a second trailer at Spring Garden, and maybe expand our trailers to Lincoln School. And even then, we don't solve the problem. I have to tell you that it's been incredibly challenging to meet the requests for variance this year. We had more than a hundred and forty-one, and we're doing our best to house students in their home schools. We start notifying families tomorrow. We have tried to continue. We made a commitment a couple of years ago to keep siblings together, especially those of special education students throughout the district. For students who have been declassified, or those who may receive services in their home school, we're going to have to reassign them back to those schools. And I'm going to say the most difficult request we have to fill is for incoming kindergartners. I am overwhelmed with the number of kindergartners. And what happens is, we'll have an incoming kindergartner and a sibling in sixth grade. So if we accept the variance for kindergarten, now I've just accepted a child not in their home school for another five years. And we have a hard time finding a spot in the home school then the next year. So, in any case, where a kindergartner is receiving a variance this year, we are making it known that it can only be for this year. All of the variances are on a year-by-year basis, people have to apply every year by February 1st, but in the case of kindergarten, we're in a place where we add a waiting list of eleven students at one of the schools, and we're not even done with registration. We just won't be able to honor those requests in the same way. And even now, we do have children, families, that have children in more than one school. When that happens, we do try and provide before, after extended day services to them to minimize the travel and the timing to get between the schools, but it's challenging, very, very challenging, and I'm quite confident that when we notify everybody, starting tomorrow, that we'll have people that- have people that are not happy with it. We did the very best we could. That's my report to you. Finally, the most exciting part is the opening of schools. On Tuesday, September third, our staff returns. The teachers' association is providing breakfast in each school, and then each school is having their opening faculty meeting at the individual school. Last year, we had the ceiling collapse at the auditorium at the high school. Back to Mr. Perigi in a minute. And not knowing if it would be ready, and given the fact that, you know me, I wanna make a more personal appearance with the staff, I will be going to the individual schools for meetings over the first three days. I'll be at the high school and middle school and Washington School on Tuesday. Wednesday and Thursday, when the students return, it's a single-session day for the students. So I'll be at Yanacaw School and Spring Garden on Wednesday, and on the single session Thursday, I'll be at Lincoln School and Radcliffe School. Friday, our students return for a full day, and that is a full day for staff and students. Cannot wait, cannot wait, to get everybody back and make sure that the hustle and bustle is about education and not everything else that we have going on. Thanks, I know it was a long report, but it's been a really long summer. Welcome back.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Mr. Evans?
So it's kind of hard to believe that school will be starting just around the corner. Summertime with the business office is an extremely period of time for us. It just seems to go by in a flash. There's never enough hours in a day and never enough weeks. But somehow, we managed to get there. We've been spending most of our time closing out the eighteen, nineteen budget, working on closing out outstanding purchase orders, contacting vendors for invoices, getting receipts of goods, and trying to issue payments to get everything done. We took on a slightly different approach to those purchase requisitions this year, and we became much more proactive throughout the year. So rather than waiting until the spring to start looking at everything that was still outstanding, between Mr. Remora heading up, the office staff, Kathy Spurrow, Lorraine Butler, and Donna Brady, they've been working everything on a sixty-day cycle, so the minute the purchase orders are outstanding for sixty days, they're already getting on top of the vendors or reaching out to the staff member who ordered the goods to get the receipts. So we can keep those purchase orders flowing, get the payments out, and get them closed. This has reduced our number of outstanding purchase orders that will be encumbered and carried over into the current school year significantly. So that number is about $200,000 in orders where it has been in excess of $500,000 to $800,000 every year. Most of those orders are orders that were placed in June, so we should be able to get them closed out very early this fall. At the same time, we are starting to prepare the reports and the data for our onsite audit. That audit will take place in the middle of September, and we also will be having our fixed asset inventory update done in the beginning of September. With the conclusion of the collective bargaining agreement for our teachers, our professionals, and secretarial staff, we worked tirelessly on calculating all of those retro salaries. They were entitled to retro salaries for the entire school year, working on those calculations. And a special thank you to Mr. Remora for his assistance, working with me to review all those calculations and make sure that everyone's salary was correct so that they would be receiving the check that they are entitled to. Mrs. Torres worked tirelessly on entering all of that data into the payroll system and getting everyone paid on the July thirtieth and August fifteenth payroll. So it was a little over 500 staff members of that affected, so we're very happy to have that kind of behind us, and I'm sure they were very happy to receive those checks over the summer. I've been spending time over the last week or so visiting all the schools, maybe talking with the custodians, checking to see the conditions of the building, and just, I do that on an annual basis, and it just gives me some time to actually interact with them when they're not being crazy during the school year. So I saw a couple buildings left, I'm looking forward to that. And while we're talking about that, I'd like to welcome our new director of buildings and grounds, Michael Perigi. He is here tonight for his first public report, and you will be sitting him at the last board meeting every single month.
He can come anytime. Come anytime.
I guess that you're leading, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Update for the auditorium. Building and electrical inspections have been completed. The cleaning of the seats, six hundred seventy-five seats, is on tonight's agenda. As soon as that is approved, I will get that scheduled, and though again, as soon as possible, they guarantee me they can get in quick and get out. Approximately about seven days worth of work, it's a lot of seats. They're gonna come in and clean them and clean the floor. High school bathroom updates. The bathrooms have been tiled, the walls have been painted white, in preparation for the York students' projects. The York students are gonna decorate the walls in the bathrooms that are open by the auditorium. Give a little flair, they're gonna take on the project in the beginning of the year. That's what they're telling me. The RISE program. We have new laminate flooring installed, new washer and dryer, new bathroom sink, and new furniture is being assembled. They bought pool tables and some furniture to decorate it for the new students for the new school year. That should be completed tomorrow. Okay, trailers at Washington. Trailers three and four have been relocated on top of units one and two. Units one and two, first floor, is scheduled to be occupied by September ninth. That's the Monday following. The students should be in the ninth, the second floor. I'm unable to give you a date of occupied. Spring Garden trailers and the two trailer at Washington are being manufactured. Delivery date to be determined. Radcliffe Front Slope awaiting approval from the town and start date in the contract. That should be done in the next two weeks. Preventive maintenance. Work orders. Work orders are summertime Ferrari and Chantel have been working daily at this assignment, getting air conditioners cleaned, unit vents in the classrooms, prepping for the new school year. The remaining summer work orders are mostly removing teachers from school to school, supply orders, deliveries, and the park hole field fence repair, which should be completed by Thursday. We have our first game. And right-to-know updating. Bloodborne passage and right-to-know specialist training for all custodial staff and maintenance is scheduled for August twenty-ninth at nine-thirty. The class is given by Ed Data Services. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. And I would just like to say one little thing. I've been able to visit some of the, most of the schools. I know what goes on during the summertime is a busy time, but you and your staff have done an outstanding job. Particularly, and I know it wasn't all you and your staff right now, but the work in the high school auditorium is phenomenal. I think, did a great job. And I think the new floor that you put up in the special ed...
Yeah, the RISE program, yeah.
Beautiful.
Dr. Glazer, could you explain a little bit about the RISE program?
Yeah, so we might remember back during the budget conversations, we have a responsibility to educate our special education students until they're twenty-one, past the age of eighteen. And we do provide authentic learning experiences, right? Life and learning experiences for most of the students' work experiences, right? Realistic life and work experiences and skills experiences. That's why when you hear about a pool table, you're talking about twenty, twenty-one-year-old people literally learning to socialize with each other, to be in the community. It is part of the program. It is an opportunity for us to bring students who have been out of the district, perhaps in tuition-paying things, back into the district. It is a savings test, but it's also a really lovely opportunity to have our own students be integrated into the community in a really authentic way.
Thank you. Good. Let's serve the...
I have one question for you. One of the major issues last year in the high school were locks on the bathroom doors. It continued throughout the entire year, even after we thought it was taken care of. Are you aware of those issues?
There's one door on the second floor that was a lot of an issue with, that I need to get resolved.
So all those will be done by the time we open?
We implemented the swipe card system, and now this year with the new IDs, it's tied to the swipe card. Some of the, there were four doors, you know, that it's rolling, or they're longer in their frames, or that kind of thing.
We're talking about the stalls, though, not...
Right, but with the...
The stalls, I'm talking about...
Huh?
You're talking stalls?
Yes.
I said locks, so I'm sorry. I was addressing the locks, which is a slightly different...
The door swipes?
No, 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 no.
He's actually...
Stall locks, the stall locks.
Sorry, I didn't understand you...
Yeah, please, 'cause that was an issue all year long last year.
Thank you. Before we go to committee reports, we have mentioned the passing of Ruth Bedford, and I have a statement myself, and then I'm sure other board members would like to say something. She will long be remembered for her feisty temperament and generosity to towns she loved. Ruth's home was always open, and if you needed to raise funds for a worthwhile cause, you were warned and welcome to do it on Highfield Lane, as we all know. Nothing will long feel the effects of Ruth's passing because she served in so many ways. And I don't know if you know, most of us do, that her mother was a teacher, and Ruth was an outstanding person that I've dealt with for the last twenty-five years, thirty years maybe, and I'm sure we'll miss her, and I'm sure not people will also.
I was just gonna say, from the minute I was hired, before I took my position, she reached out. Not only was Mrs. Bedford supportive of me, her unconditional support of the schools and education, I've never, I don't know that I've experienced anything like that. Any issue, any incidents, she was right there to support, and as Mr. Kuzinski said, to open up her home, to even raise more money for that. I am sad that it's this timing. My favorite thing in my last three years is they've had the garden party for the Nutley Family Service Bureau, was always kind of my opportunity to sit with her and catch up and hear what's going on, and like I said, just timing-wise, that'll happen in a couple weeks, and it'll happen without her, and she will be greatly, greatly missed.
Ruth was a great role model and a mentor. She was a wonderful, giving person, as she said, opening her whole heart to many causes. I have fond memories of attending the lollipop party, the September Social, where she had all the organizations come and meet each other so that we could network. Her no-lost or clam bake during the summer, and her infamous Kentucky Derby parties. Ruth was a great friend and an asset to the community, and I'm gonna miss her very much.
Mr. Flora? So I met her when I was quite young, and I have to tell you that if you wanna talk about the ultimate Nutleyite and commitment to the community, it was Ruth Bedford. She did, and she mentioned September Social, which was always great, and then the lollipop party, which I thought was the most thing the first time I went, because I wasn't even able to drink, probably, I didn't go on the first time I got. But how that transitioned when things changed from the Family Service Bureau, she found the Rescue Squad, right? And she always made sure that continued towards the community, so whether it was the Squad or other agencies, she really supported the community with her home, her heart, her values, donations. I don't think there's anybody that was here before or after us that will be as committed to all of that as Ruth was, and truly, just a great person to put down.
Right. Any other board members?
Well, as you know, she was a Republican. I formerly was the president of the Nutley Republican Club. That's when we really got to know each other and got close to each other, and then she invited me to become her permanent volunteer bartender for all of her events, from lollipops to her clam bake and all that. And she's just, I just wanna say that, as you just said, and everybody else has said, nobody before or after could ever give back as much to this community as she has for a hundred and one years. And her husband also, who I met for a little while, the judge and other, just an amazing family, and they'll be missed tremendously.
Thank you.
I had an opportunity to meet her a few times, and she has such a lovely house and was such a gracious hostess, really a lovely woman, and someone with such great respect for the community and love for it, and she will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you. Committee reports. Mr. DeMay, will you give us the latest report on...
Finance. Finance. All right, well, half of my finance committee report was summarized by Mr. Perigi, but I also wanna thank for the dedication to the district so quickly. Second item on our agenda was Ms. Eamons and Ms. Remora due the August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen finance resolutions going to year-end transfers, contract renewals, and the purchase of IPads for elementary schools. And third was Dr. Glazer reviewed personnel transfers and replacements, as well as job description updates in district-wide staffing for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Next meeting, Tuesday, September seventeenth, at four thirty.
Thank you. Mr. Robler, review administration, please.
Yes, sir. We met with Mr. Kuzinski, myself, and Dr. Glazer, and Dr. Glazer reviewed the process for the application the district submitted to the state for emergency aid. We thanked the board secretary and her staff for working diligently on that for two weeks straight. While Nutley does not meet the express criteria due to our significant needs with regard to overcrowding, special education and school counseling, as well as safety and security, the decision was made to try to offset some of the costs. There's no information on when the grant may be reviewed, as she said earlier tonight. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Kuzinski reviewed the meetings held regarding the Yanacaw school dismissal, as superintendent just appropriately discussed. Dr. Glazer updated the Committee on Registration, Enrollment, and Class Size, as well as a resolution for more than a hundred and forty variance requests, which we're still working on. An update was given on the trailers of Washington and Spring Garden schools. Construction meeting was held the day after the committee meeting, and Dr. Glazer shared the additional information this evening. Mr. Kuzinski shared the progress he had seen at the Nutley High School auditorium, as Mr. Perigi just described. The updated job description for the business administrator position and the hiring process was reviewed. Dr. Glazer reviewed staffing and the personnel on the agenda tonight for approval. Dr. Glazer provided an update on legal matters, and the next meeting will be September seventeenth at six p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Robler. Mr. Robler, will you do the policy report, please?
The policy committee met on the twenty-first at seven forty-five. In attendance was Ms. Dancheck, Martin, and myself, including Dr. Glazer, Ms. Low Consolo, and Mr. Vanya, and you. The committee reviewed and updated the home instruction due to health condition policy, number twenty-four twelve. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Vanya reviewed the changes to the student suicide prevention policy, number fifty-three fifty. Dr. Glazer detailed the work coordinator of school counselor, Meredith Kirkens, and supervisor of special services, April Vitiello, did in review to update and make consistent with the district's risk assessment procedure in consultation with Strauss Estmeide, who provides the language and the district attorney. They have done an exceptional job with this procedure. The updates were shared with the administrative leadership team today at their retreat, and the new procedures will be operationalized with the new school year. In addition, a number of policies were reviewed and updated where necessary. They're included in the first reading on the agenda tonight, and the next meeting will be Wednesday, September eleventh, at seven thirty.
Thank you. Ms. Dancheck, will you do the academic report, please?
Sure. The academic committee met on August twenty-first. Ms. Johnson, coordinator of science, pre-K through twelve, reviewed the changes to the curriculum, as well as the move to mystery science at the elementary level. Mystery science is aligned with the next-gen science standards and alleviates purchase and replenishment of the kits, except for grade six. This has been generating a lot of excitement among the staff. This is a pilot year, and revisions will be made as necessary. Ms. Johnson shared her appreciation for how engaged the staff was in the curriculum writing process and is looking forward to seeing it in the classrooms. Ms. Benavides, coordinator of English Language Arts, pre-K through twelve, and Mr. Dwyer, coordinator of Social Studies, pre-K through twelve, reviewed changes to the humanities curriculum. The course is a reimaging of this interdisciplinary course combining arts, language, and culture. The course allows students to analyze, interpret, acquire historical and cultural contexts, access a variety of media, and assess the impact of a variety of forms. Ms. Benavides also reviewed the changes to the creative writing curriculum and new screen writing curriculum. Mr. Dwyer also detailed the updates to the middle school social studies curriculum incorporating financial literacy into the units. Although it's a required change by the state, there is a lot of enthusiasm for the additions to this curriculum. The committee also reviewed Schedule A, list of all the curriculum in the district for the annual approval by the Board of Education, which is a requirement of PUSAC. We are proud to have completed up-to-date curriculum in all areas and all grade levels. This is a huge change and accomplishment from only six years ago. Ms. Low Consolo reviewed the updates to the elementary handbook, which is also on the agenda for tonight's approval. Mr. Vanya and Ms. Low Consolo reviewed the plan for professional learning in the district, contracts for several of the... Contracts for several of the consultants, including those for math, English Language Arts, and foundations are on the agenda for tonight. Those just mentioned are a continuation of the work we have been doing in the district. Nutley is becoming recognized as a model district in these areas, and other districts are actually coming to a visit, observe, and participate in our demonstration of lessons. Mr. Bagna and Ms. Locanulo gave an update on school, schoolage implementation, and a video they created related to the goals and expectations for the implementation was shared. We also reviewed field trips and professional development requests. Dr. Blazer reviewed enrollment and registration, as well as variance requests. Our next meeting of the academic committee will be on Wednesday, September 11th.
Thank you very much. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation for number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign in with Mrs. Kukuzza before you take the microphone. First person to have something to address the board now is the time on resolution items. Thank you. Ms. Dancheck, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions, number 7, as written.
Second.
Roll call? I'm sorry, discussion first. Now, roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
I vote yes, except I abstain on number two.
Mr. Farar?
Yes to one, abstaining to two, and yes, three to seven.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalaera?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, do you take administration resolution?
Yes, Mr. Kaczynski, I'd like to move administration resolutions, number two, as listed, I saw moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalaera?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, will you take personnel resolution, please?
No, fine. I'm sorry. We're on page. I'm still here.
Too far. I'm sorry, Mr. Farar. Sorry. Mr. Farar, let me answer.
Move finance resolutions, number 24. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes, abstaining to number 19.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalaera?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Clark, now.
Okay. I would like to move personnel agenda resolutions, number one to two, as written.
Second. Yes, I need a second. I did a second. I'm sorry. Yes. Read testimonials, sir.
Whereas Mrs. Deborah Pavlisko has tendered her resignation as a non-instructional aide effective August 1st, 2019, and has signified her intention of retiring from active service, and whereas Mrs. Pavlisko has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 19 years, and whereas through the years, Mrs. Pavlisko has exemplified the finest qualities of the aide position at all times. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mrs. Pavlisko its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service, and extends to her its best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Need a roll call? Second. Have a second. I did a second.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Sorry. I abstain on both of them. First time.
Abstaining.
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Abstaining to number one, yes to number two.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalaera?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Arum, will you take policy resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Parigi. Directing the policy resolution, one and two. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Farar?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalaera?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Thank you. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. First person having anything to address the board is welcome to come forward, signing with Mrs. Kukuzza, please.
Proactive. I did.
Hi, Gina Summers, 27 Stewart Avenue. I actually hear from my son, he's approved that I can come here and speak for him. He's away at band camp right now. So, everybody knows the schedules were released, and he's a senior this year. He started applying for schools, he knows what he wants to do. He is applying to engineering schools. They've all told him that his last year, they're going to make sure that he's challenging himself, so it's not time to slack off for him. So, one of his electives that he chose, he gave three backups for that. So, one of them was Intro to Engineering Design. The backups were Electronics, Macroeconomics, and Culinary Arts. That was his, like, you know, he knew he didn't want that, but that was just to put in there. He was given Survey of Pop Music. So, I'd like to know, I know that there's been cuts, not all programs are available that are listed in the program guide, and in time when there's cuts, short on space for classrooms, how is it that Intro to Engineering and Macroeconomics is not available in Survey of Pop Music, although I'm sure it's a great class, that survives the schedule and not these other classes?
So, I was just going to say, did you call the guidance counselor?
Well, I sent an email.
Okay. So, because none of us are going to be able to answer the question as much as the school counselor, and I'll say to you, if you don't hear back from the school counselor, give me a call or Mr. Bagna a call, and we'll make sure that we can address the question, because we won't know the answer.
You know, based on, you know, he did all this work, you know, so why?
Can I see if you asked a name?
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
But like I said, counselor, I know better than you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Just 'cause?
Anyone else?
Just 'cause?
Hi, everybody. Chris Osage, 61 Grant Avenue. I'm here to say thank you for helping me run the Let's Learn program, and we had 169 students participate, we had 18 different classes, and I had 20 magnificent assistants who helped me, students from high school to a couple of middle school students. And Ms. Saridia, one of the teachers from Raglith in the program, she ran a field drive for the Nutley Family Service Bureau, and some students stayed a little late to make some projects for the children, for the people at the Nutley Family Service Bureau. And then there's the list of people that I have to thank for. The program is great, the program runs well. I'm maybe the face of the program, but it's not me, it's everybody that's behind me. So, Dr. Blazer and the board for helping me with the, since the camp, Nutley took over, and you offered the bus, some students were able to take advantage of that. And Mr. DeMayo for having somebody on your end help me when the children were bussed, and you had supervision there. Peggy Hollywood who took care of the busing, Mrs. Yaman's and Mr. Moore for supporting the program financially, too. The Ian and Dave Steiner for the tech support, Mr. Bagna for helping me with my rooms and things and last-minute changes, and Mrs. Locanulo for trying to help me figure out what to do with this extended-day children, Mrs. Greco for covering the events, and John Lee for covering, thank you very much, for publicizing. Mr. Parigi, who I got to meet the first day, and he smiled and shook his head a lot. Thank you.
It was his first day, too.
Yeah, he smiled and shook his head a lot, so that made me feel good. Mr. Harbison, who relocated his basketball camp so we could use the gym, because we didn't have another place to put on our show, and Mr. Farar, Mrs. Boyle, and Mr. Anderson for helping me with the security, to keep me up, another pair of eyes, and keeping me up to date what had to be done. And Mr. Pyro and Javon Apetaco, who helped me also with the gym and using the different rooms. It's a big undertaking. I enjoy it, I love it, and the students love it, and my teachers are great, but it wouldn't run without all of you. So, thank you very much.
With that, you're dismissed.
Chris has continued, Ms. Osage has continued to run the program, even in retirement, always hugely successful, even though it's not a district program, because it runs so closely, we bask in the glow, and parents tell us how wonderful their students' experience was, and every year, every year, they tell us that.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
That's okay. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Any old business to come before the board?
I have some old business. A couple of things, if you'll indulge me. I'm under the impression that as part of, that Harry Rabino, our architect of record, still our architect of record, correct?
Yes.
I'm under the understanding that they generated plans to add classrooms to every elementary school. Is that correct?
That, oh, that's correct. I'm sure, Chris, still, yeah, we, we.
Not since I've been here, but maybe previous.
Before that, yes.
So, the answer is yes?
Yes.
How would I gain access to all of those plans?
Just let me know you want to see them.
I would love to see them, because in order, in order to solve this overcrowding issue that everyone sitting at this table is aware of and wants to resolve, nobody sitting at this table wants trailers, and we want to eliminate those trailers as soon as possible. I don't think we can do it without understanding what our options are, and if we've exhausted all of, all of our options. So, I would love to see those plans, you know, for example, I don't know if we could have bumped out in front of Washington School when we put that secure entrance in.
Yes.
Maybe we could have just bumped out and put four classrooms in there, and we wouldn't have trailers. We talked about at our administration committee meeting the other day about the space that's vacant at Spring Garden School, where we took the boilers out. We never took the boilers out of Washington School, we never took them out of Lincoln School. Maybe we could have done that and created classroom space with a referendum that would have been a fraction of $70 million. I don't know.
One of the plans shows the boilers at Washington, so.
So, I would, I would love to be able to get my arms around that and understand what other options we have, rather than 70 million. And I, I think there has to be other options, I really do have a passionate belief that that's possible, and I think that's what we need to do sooner rather than later. I know our next meeting for facilities is in October. Would love to meet before October and see what we could do about that. And the other, the other issue, when we met with the mayor and Mr. Petracca the other day at Yanacaw, you know, one of the issues that we have is managing that process in the first couple of days of school and beyond, and they're supporting us in the beginning with the police presence, and hopefully it won't take any longer than that. And then, whenever they can, and whatever staff we have inside that can help us out, whether it's Mr. Francie or whoever, but tie that in with school security at the same time, because if we had security in the elementary schools, we wouldn't have to have Mr. Francie come out of the school, we'd have a resource officer or, or, you know, whoever outside helping out directing traffic, that's somebody you could respect and not abuse, and so, tie security in with, you know, construction, you know. Listen, we're going to have to pass a referendum to be able to solve the problem with overcrowding. I know that, everybody here knows that, but I would love to see those plans, to see what our options are, to bring it way under the $70 million.
Thank you for saying so.
We might want to look into do that with our strategic one, with planning, and we can bring them back after the time, or you could probably review them. They haven't seen them in four years, five, maybe.
But, Mr. Kaczynski, I, I think one of the reasons why we chose the option of not doing the five schools is that the five schools work, we would touch every single school, and it would be more expensive than just concentrating, but I, it's a good idea for everyone to see.
We have three new board members since then, so I'd like to revisit.
And, and Mr. Riley, thank you for saying so. We really, I, I have to say, the collaboration that we have with the police department is pretty tremendous.
I agree.
And after that meeting, the officers that were there, Officer Meery in particular, Officer O'Halloran, Lieutenant Geider, who I feel like I talk to a thousand times a day. They're wonderful. But one of the things that came up, that I think that I was not aware of, I had no idea, and they directed me to, actually, the township website. There is an opportunity for an officer called a SLEO one that are volunteers, they're not police officers, they're not retired officers, you know, they're people that are trained to do events in the community, they're people that are trained in crisis management. It was really interesting to read. It was not a position that I was familiar with, it wasn't anything, when I was reading it, I was thinking, gosh, I should be trained, right? It was that, that kind of position? I agree with you. You know, our teachers walk the students out, they make the eye contact with the parents, and, and that's really great and consistent. I agree with you, too, after the electronic sign goes, after, after the tickets, you know, are, are not happening, what, what is compelling people to continue to follow the rules? And, and as wonderful as Mr. Francie is knocking on windows, it's not Newark Airport, it's Yanacaw School.
It's not his job.
So, I, I think that we, you know, I was really interested in being directed to that resource. It was, again, it wasn't anything that I had been familiar with before, and I definitely am hoping that we'll be able to research that and pursue it.
Perfect, thank you. And the only other issue I have is, putting it mildly, I was challenged about a month ago about a statement I made at the Yanacaw School PTO meeting about our budget surplus, and so we reached out, Mrs. Clark and I both reached out to the, Mrs. Yaman's, and asked her what the unencumbered and encumbered surplus was the night of the May 22 meeting at Yanacaw School. And I'm proud to say that what Mrs. Yaman's sent me last week was almost verbatim what I stated at, you're shaking your head, was verbatim what I said at the time, the unencumbered surplus was over $2 million, and the encumbered surplus was over $1 million, which is exactly what I said at the PTO meeting. She sent that, that was sent to all the board members last week. Mrs. Arum was there, Mrs. Clark was there. By the way, the chairperson of the Budget Committee also saw me the day after that meeting and agreed with me that I was right about what I stated at that meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Farar?
I don't recall that.
When, when we were going down Franklin Avenue together and rolled down windows?
Yeah, no recall.
No recollection? Okay. So, I just want to make that public statement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any new business? Where the Board of Education will be discussing matters of example public discussion pursuits on JSA, Chem, Court, there's twelve, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education resets the closed executive session at this time to interview athletic positions and discuss student matters, personnel, and property acquisition.